Good evening, Cerritos residents and the members of our community. I called the order, the Thursday, August 14, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Regular Meeting. The invocation will be given by Pastor Dustin Parker of Concordia Lutheran Church, and the pledge will be led by Cub Scout PAC 529. Please rise if you are able for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Pastor Dustin Parker.
If you are willing, please join me in prayer. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening to ask you to put your blessings upon this city. Lord, to help those who were elected to serve and those who serve in our city in every form, whether in city government or with our fine sheriff and fire departments or those that serve in volunteer positions. Lord, bless them with the wisdom and knowledge to do their work, not for their sake, but for the community's sake. Lord, help peace grow in our community. Help forgiveness and mercy prosper. Lord, be with our schools as they start up this week, and may they have a safe and blessed year. And Lord, in all things, remind us of your goodness and your providence and your grace. We pray these things in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Those in uniform, please scout salute. Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you, troop. Thank you, troop. Cub Scout PAC 529, please be seated. PAC 529, can you please stay here? And let's just say your name. And where did you, where, where, school just started, where did you just start, what, where did you just start school? And what grade?
Hello, I'm Macy Thatcher, and I go to Nixon Elementary, and I'm going into fifth grade.
I'm Vihant Satish, and I'm going to Lille Elementary, fifth grade.
I am Ayana Lee, and I go to Lille Elementary, fifth grade.
My name is Brandon Percol, and I'm homeschooled, and I'm going into fifth grade.
My name is Felipe Torres, I'm homeschooled, and I'm going to fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Justin Downey, and I'm going to Whitman Elementary, and I'm going into fifth grade.
My name is Caleb Park, and I go to Arborley Montessori into second grade.
My name is Thomas Lau, I'm going to Lost Coyotes Elementary School for fifth grade.
My name is Russell Thatcher, and I go to Nixon Elementary, going into third grade.
My name is Oliver, and I'm going to fifth grade in Whitman Elementary.
My name is Edwin Fernando, and I go to Whitman Elementary School, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Ryan Yao, and I go to Lille, and I'm going into third grade.
My name is Shisty, and I go to Whitman Elementary, and I'm going into fifth grade.
My name is Addie, I'm going to second grade, and I do homeschool.
My name, my name is Max, and I go to Lille Elementary, and I go to second grade.
My name is Valencia, and I go to Lewis, in second grade.
My name is Peyton, I, I go to Whitman Elementary, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Anjali Lu, I'm going to fifth grade, and I go to Lille Elementary.
My name is Anindita Shah, I go to Carver, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Tashfia Rahman, I'm in fifth grade, and I'm gonna go, I mean, I'm going to Lille Elementary.
My name is Charlotte Lee, and I'm going to Cerritos Elementary, and I'm going into fifth grade.
My name is Thais, and I'm, and I go to Lewis, in fourth grade.
My name is Ariel, and I go to Lille Elementary, in fourth grade.
My name is Kieran, and I'm gonna go in first grade in my homeschool.
My name is Shloke, and I go to Cerritos Elementary, and I'm in first grade.
My name is Alani, I go to Whitney High School, and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Anna Palm, and I'm, and I'm going to seventh grade at Whitney High.
My name is Dominic Madahar, I'm in ninth grade at Whitney High School.
Thank, thank you for doing the pledge. PAC 529. Even though, even though it's a school night, thanks for coming out. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and agency member Hong.
Present.
Council and agency member Polito.
Present.
Council and agency member Sei.
Present.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Johnson.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Yokuyama.
Here, the next item is presentations. The Cerrito City Council is honored to make these presentations tonight. And first, we will be starting with South Asian Heritage Month. This, thank you, Mark. South Asian Heritage Month. The Cerrito City Council recognizes South Asian Heritage Month, which is observed annually from July 18 to August 17. This month provides an opportunity to honor and celebrate the invaluable contributions of individuals from the South Asian community to the cultural, social, and economic fabric of our society and to our city of Cerritos. SAHAS for Cause. Payal Kohli, will you please come up here? In celebration of South Asian Heritage Month, the City Council is pleased to recognize SAHAS for Cause. A nonprofit organization led by Payal Kohli, which is dedicated to supporting immigrants as they begin a new chapter of their lives in the United States. Under Ms. Kohli's leadership, SAHAS for Cause offers a wide range of programs, workshops, events, and services to help South Asian immigrants adapt and thrive in their new surroundings. Their efforts foster a sense of belonging and empowerment within the community. The Cerrito City Council is honored to highlight the important work of SAHAS for Cause and is grateful for the many contributions made by the city's residents of South Asian heritage who continue to shape and enrich our community. And I am honored to present the City of Cerritos proclamation from the City of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council to SAHAS for Cause, and I'm honored to give it to you, Payal Kohli. So, Payal, could you tell us, could you say a few words about SAHAS for Cause?
I'm so thankful to get this recognition and the celebration of the South Asian Heritage Week Month here in Cerritos. SAHAS started with a very small initiative from my garage. I wanted to take care of immigrant families coming here in Southern California, and that was a very small naive thought, thought. And I thought I'll do some events here and there, I'll go to the South Asian market, I'll take care of the people working in beauty parlors, the stores on the street, and that was about it. I had no clue that that small imagination, that small thought is going to grow up to be an organization of the size that we are today. So, and that I could have not done alone by myself. I had some amazing founding members who believed in my thought, and then came my board members, and then the community. We work with ABC School District very closely. We work with our small businesses very closely. And so, all of this is the celebration of our collaboration and community effort. I'm so thankful to Ms. Linda Johnson, who's always been our cheerleader and saying yea to all the ideas that we have and supporting us, and to the entire leadership here in Cerritos. So, I'm very, very proud to be resident of Cerritos, and I enjoy each and every day that I do work and execute projects, bring grants, bring recognition to all the efforts that we are doing from federal to state to local to family foundations, and I want to continue to do that as long as I can. So, thank you, thank you.
Payal, what is your title in SAHAS for Cause?
I'm the founder and the executive director.
Thank you. Will my council colleagues please join me to take a photo with Payal? So, so Payal, could, would you like to please have your officers come and join us for a group photo?
I would like to invite Kanchan Gokle. She is one of our founding members, and she takes care of our finance from when we had zero finance to be calculated to the budgets and the reports that we have to do today. Kanchan is the backbone of SAHAS. The next, I would like to call Shubha Nayar. Shubha Nayar is a new addition to our team, she's with us for last two years. She brings a lot of energy, creativity into SAHAS. She takes care of our older adult wellness program. We started with one older adult wellness program called Maj Masti Sehat, which is called Fun Relaxation and Health, and now we are running six such groups around LA County and Orange County, and we have one member in the audience who recognized Shubha for her efforts. Thank you. We have a few other members who were supposed to be here, but we have the event going on, and they probably are on their way. The next one that I wanted to call upon here is Raji Satish. Although she's not here, but I still would like to recognize her because she's another founder member of SAHAS, and she takes care of our administrative and compliance wing. Another team member that we were going to proclaim today is Sheetal Ayathan. She is the leader of our women and family wing. She works day in and day out to prevent domestic violence in South Asian immigrant community. And unfortunately, the numbers are really, really high, and with all the changes since COVID, the numbers are only on rise. So, I wish she was here to take the award. The next one that I wanted to recognize also is Uma Kumrin. Her husband is here to take the award on her front. Uma is a fearless Cerritos resident who is doing outreach and community education all seven days a week. We are out and about distributing flyers, talking about different health issues and other updates that come from county and city to our community members translating in our own languages. So, I wish Uma was here to be with us. Thank you, Kumrin. And fortunately, we also have one of our amazing board members here in with us, and his name is Emil Ali, and I would request for Emil Ali to also join us. He is a lawyer, and he practices from Cerritos, and he guides us really well so that we can continue our programming. So, Emil, please join us.
Thank you, Payal, for bringing your officers here with you, and let's take a group photo. Thank you, SAHAS for Cause, and Payal Kohli and her officers. United Indian Associations of Southern California. The United Indian Associations of Southern California, UIASC, is a nonprofit organization committed to preserving and promoting Indian heritage, culture, and unity within the Indian-American community of Southern California. UIASC organizes meetings, seminars, lectures, field trips, and supports charitable organizations and activities, such as the recent celebration of India's Independence Day, held this past weekend to promote education and awareness of Indian culture and heritage. Pat, who's, who, who's coming up with you? I know, I know the officers are here, but who, who was the chair that was gonna come up with you, Pat? Thank you for coming up. The Cerrito City Council is proud to recognize the impactful work of United Indian Associations of Southern California in promoting ongoing education and awareness of the rich contributions of Indian culture, and the Cerrito City Council is honored to recognize United Indian Association of Southern California in honor of South Asian Heritage Month. Congratulations. So, I'm gonna give the mic to Officer Pat, Pat Naik of UIASC, and I'm, I'm honored to also acknowledge that he is a City of Cerritos Commissioner. Thank you for your service to Cerritos. And I will now give you the mic, Officer Pat Naik, and please tell us about UIASC, and introduce your colleagues for us, and let them say a few words as well.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Frank Yokuyama and the entire council here. And it is my pleasure to introduce a couple of gentlemen who are here. One is Kabel Khanda, who is the president of the organization, a long-term resident of Southern California. Along with me, I have Dr. Sukrit Mukherjee, who is a scientist. I don't know, he's got like seven or eight degrees. I can't even remember. But Dr. Sukrit Mukherjee, there are two active members, and then I have a whole slew of the officers in the organization. I would like to call them, if that is okay with you. Not at the moment. Okay, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for bestowing this honor on Southern California's association. We started this association actually a few years ago. In 2021, our Prime Minister of India requested that we celebrate 20, 75 years of independence and celebrate it in different programs. And at that time, we started the committee called India's at 75, and I was chosen the chairman of that committee, and we did those programs very successfully. And after we finished that, then we decided, okay, we should continue to serve the community, and India 75 is gone now, what we should do? Then we named that same association as Indian, United Indian Associations of Southern California. So, I'm the president, currently president, and Mr. Sukrit Mukherjee, my colleague right here, he's a convener of the program we just finished. So, I'll let, let him talk.
Thank you, Kabelji, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also the, all the city council. I'm so thankful to the city of Cerritos for bestowing this honor on us. United Indian Association of Southern California was born out of necessity, that Kabelji just showed the background, but the purpose of the organization to serve as an umbrella organization, to support all other charitable causes and the other communities here in Cerritos and beyond, actually around the Southern California. We aspire to be the go-to organizations which will actually support the community. which will actually support the community activities and the events, especially the South Asian communities and the Indian origin, those who are from the Indian origin, to support them for any other social and charitable means. We are starting to work with the federal state and the federal funding so that we can help our social and charitable causes that we are destined to serve the communities. So that is what we are aspiring to be. And that is why we are here and we will be heading in the future. Thank you.
So I'm honored to present this City of Saritos proclamation from the City of Saritos and the Sarito City Council in honor and recognition of South Asian Heritage Month presented to United Indian Associations of Southern California. Council colleagues, can you come up here and join me in a photo with them? So can the officers please join us now up here?
Okay, so I'm just going to acknowledge the names of the officers. When I mention your name, can you please raise your hand? Amrit Bandari. Okay. Dr. Rangesh Gharisali. Charu, yeah. Charu Sheva Kumar. Raise your hand, please. Mrs. Mukherjee. Aparna Hande, raise your hand. Rajeshwari Gharisali. Dr. Dr. Joshi. Mr. Arvind Patel. Mrs. Kabel Kanda. Mr. Sudip Gorakshakar. Lata Ahir. Rohini Joshi. And let's see, who else? Anybody else I missed? Pat Naik. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. Thank you. Good to see you, Lata. Thank you so much.
All right, so, see you.
Okay. Thank you, United Indian Associations of Southern California. Smita Vasant, will you please come on up? Smita Vasant. I'm really excited. I'm really excited to recognize Smita Vasant. Is an award-winning entrepreneur, fashion vlogger, and international bestselling author of The Confidence of Yes. She actively organizes and supports numerous community events, including in Saritos, such as the City of Saritos Diwali Mela in October and the International Diversity Festival in the City of Artesia. And she has for 10 years been doing, organizing the LA India Fashion Week here in Saritos at our Sheraton Saritos. Thank you. All of these events of Smita Vasant's celebrate and highlight Indian culture and heritage. In addition to educating others about Indian fashion, Ms. Vasant empowers women by helping them cultivate a personal sense of style and confidence. The Sarito City Council and myself, Mayor Frank Yokoyama, we are honored to recognize you, Smita Vasant, and your contributions to the community, to the City of Saritos, through your hard work and dedication. Thank you, Smita. So I'm honored to present this proclamation to you from the City of Saritos and the Sarito City Council in honor and celebration of South Asian Heritage Month to you. But I'm going to let you first say some words about yourself and how I'm so proud that we're recognizing you for South Asian Heritage Month.
Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor Frank Yokoyama and the City Council. Thank you. It's truly a great honor for me to be here and accept this award in, you know, representing all of South Asians. I've been organizing community events for a very long time. Actually, since I was a kid, I was organizing something in my building. So anyway, so what we do here in the City of Saritos, I know it sounded like I organize the whole Saritos Diwali event, but I just do the fashion show portion of it. Thank you, though. And Linda is here. Linda is one of the organizers of the Diwali Festival. And same thing for the Diversity Festival in the City of Artesia. I do organize the fashion show. And it's a great honor for me to present our culture, present our style, you know, showcase what we have. Like you said, style and culture. And yeah, so the other thing we do is I've also organized events for kitchen events, not only just fashion, but also kitchen. And the group is called Kitchen Queens. And through the group, we've actually supported students from Saritos College and culinary arts students. So that was kind of my dream, is to organize cooking events and then give back, you know, to the local community. So that's why I really appreciate this award and this recognition. So thank you so much and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you. I also would like to say before I give you the mic, Frank has been a great supporter of all our events for years. Same thing with Linda. And I hope to see you guys there at the next event. Mark, please join us. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Frank, for being a great supporter.
Thank you. Who came with you today? And you can call up your friends and family.
My partner in crime is my husband, Dr. Kishore Vasant. He is here as well. And he's always a great support to me in all of our events, so.
Come on up, doctor. I always see him at all of your events. Saritos Council colleagues, would you please join us for a photo with Smita Vasant? Let's look.
Right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Please stay there. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more.
There we go, right here. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I so appreciate it. Please join us. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I'm so happy and proud that the City of Saritos celebrated with all of you and the residents of Saritos South Asian Heritage Month. Thank you for celebrating South Asian Heritage Month with the City of Saritos and the Sarito City Council. Now I have a very important presentation. Will Asunshin Annie Delacruz please come up? Asunshin Annie Delacruz. Thank you for helping her. Thank you for patiently waiting, Annie. Nanai Annie. One-hundredth birthday. I'll say it again. One-hundredth birthday. Let me stand over here. The Sarito City Council would like to extend its warmest congratulations and heartfelt wishes to Ms. Asunshin Annie Delacruz. Nanai. Nanai. Nanai Annie. Nanai Annie. On the occasion of her one-hundredth birthday, just about four hours from now. August 15. Because you were born on August 15, 1925, right? Born in Norzegore, Bulacan, Philippines. Asunshin Annie Delacruz. Nanai Annie. Her remarkable milestone is a testament to a life filled with incredible experiences, lasting contributions, and enduring strength. Please join me in celebrating and applauding Annie Delacruz. Greg? Greg? Glenn? Glenn? Come take a photo with Annie. The council colleagues, let's take a photo with Nanai.
Nanai, thank you.
Nanai Annie, we're going to... The Sarito City Council wants to take a photo with you, please. Please. Okay, so Suzanne? Suzanne? The daughter, Suzanne. Would you and Nanai Annie like to say a few words? And then could you please introduce the family also?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank the entire family of Mayor Yokoyama because they suggested it and approached me. We greatly appreciate it and also the whole council. This would be a memorable day for all of us, which will stay in our heart as long as we live. And we greatly appreciate you all. So in behalf of my family, thank you so much. I wish I can invite you all in my mom's celebration on Saturday. We have a big party for her with families and friends. Right with us is our family from the Philippines, my brother Jose and Nora, and also my brother from Lakewood, June and Imelda. And then we are also blessed with so many friends and business partners which are gathered here today, which is Joan and Buddy Madamba, Glenda Apostol, Lea and Robert Francisco, Carmelita Tjungson, and Rosie Valerio. So thank you so much for all the support from you guys, from families and friends, and all the benefits my mom received from the city. So in behalf of my family, a great thank you. From the bottom of my heart, from my mom, say thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Nanai. Nanai Annie for joining us tonight. I'm so honored and proud that this family, this Saritos family, this Saritos resident is celebrating her one-hundredth birthday with us tonight at our City Council meeting. Thank you, Suzanne. And let's take a group photo with the family. Oh, yes.
Sorry, I forgot. It's part of me, but my youngest son Jared D. and Joseph D. Thank you.
And we are honored, the City of Saritos proclamation, we are honored, the Sarito City Council is honored to present this proclamation to Asunshin Annie Delacruz, celebrating your one-hundredth birthday. to Asunshin Annie Dela Cruz, celebrating your one hundredth birthday on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, so let's take a group photo with the family.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much all. Thank you very much all.
Can you please all come up here? Lea, Robert, Joan, June, Imelda, Glenda, Carmelita, Rosie.
Of course, of course. Do we got it? What do you think, Annie?
Thank you very much.
She said she won't forget you. As long as she lives.
Okay, happy birthday, Nanai Annie. Okay, so, um. Thank you to all of you, thank you to all of you attending the meeting today. I was really excited about these presentations. I was excited about Annie's one hundredth birthday and I'm just so honored to recognize the wonderful, beautiful diversity of our city and this month is South Asian Heritage Month. So I'm gonna see if my council colleagues have any comments. Councilmember Say, do you have any comments?
Definitely, Nana, you're just five years younger than my mother. So when I see you, when in Chinese call Nana, it's like grandma, very close call. And my grandkids call me Nanai. I wanna say congratulation. I'm looking for another twenty years more to go to see you. And keep healthy and God bless you. Thank you.
Councilmember Hong.
Yes, I'm so touched tonight because my mom also live until ninety-one years old and she have been living with me for thirty-six years. So I'm so happy to see you tonight and a happy birthday from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Councilmember Mark Palito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to our community for this special moment. And I just wanted to say all the best, Nanai Annie. I don't think there's ever been anyone in my entire family that's ever reached one hundred years. So this is something very special. And all the years that I've been in this community, I've never seen a centenarian to show up at a city council meeting. So, and then to grace us with song. We are truly blessed here in our community. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes, happy birthday, Nanai. We all celebrate with you on your hundredth birthday. And congratulations again to all of our recipients and thank you for all that you do in our community. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing and having us celebrate South Asian Heritage Month. Later tonight in our agenda, we'll be discussing the Sister City Program with the city in the Philippines. But I wanted to share with you all now that at our next Ad Hoc Sister City Committee meeting, I will be proposing to expand our city's Sister City Program to where we will consider the adoption of a city in India. Having just recognized the members of the Indian community, it would be appropriate to see another Sister City relationship with a country that reflects the demographics of Cerritos. So looking forward to that.
Thank you to my council colleagues for your comments. Thank you to all of you who joined us for the presentations. The next item is five B, City Manager. Do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Item five B overview will be given by City Clerk Cindy Navo.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is consideration of city council nominations for resident appointment for service on the city's advisory boards. There are currently three vacancies to be filled, which are on the Economic Development Commission, or EDC. EDC meetings are tentatively scheduled to begin Tuesday, September ninth. Applications for service are available on the city's website and in the city clerk's office and will be accepted until all positions are filled. It is now recommended the city council open public comment on this item and nominate individuals from the eligible pool of applicants to serve two-year terms for open advisory board seats, subject to the city charter anti-nepotism law and majority approval of the city council. The city council may also defer nominations to a future meeting or provide an alternate direction. For appointments made this evening, I will administer the oath of office to any appointees in attendance at the appropriate time. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do any of my colleagues wish to make an appointment tonight?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Okay, oh, okay, good, great. So let's. Okay, so we're gonna have questions first. Councilmember Say, do you have any questions? Okay. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Councilmember Palito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, Ms. City Clerk. Since the first meeting is September ninth, are there two additional council meetings where we will have an opportunity to appoint? Because I fully intend to appoint someone. I just wanna make sure that they're able to attend. So the second meeting in August, we could also appoint. And then also, since we moved our regularly scheduled September meeting to September eighth, would that still be in time for them to be seated at the first meeting of the Economic Development Commission?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Palito. Yes, that means we would have two opportunities. However, we would have to ensure that we swear in the appointee at the meeting of the eighth or the morning of September ninth prior to service.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, I will now open for, I will now open for public comments on this item. Do what, we have any comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the city council have any nominations for appointment? Councilmember Hong.
Yes, I do. It's my honor tonight to appoint Economic Developer Commissioner. And I've been, you know, there are a lot of people, you know, I've been searched and in contact with. And some of them are very busy, you know. And I was so lucky finally to get one of the amazing, you know, historical, you know, not historical, it's outstanding woman in this city. And Grace Hu finally say, yeah, you know, I would do it, you know, I'm the, I'm the person and I know this is city in Siam. And I was like, really? I'm so appreciative. You know, because everybody knows she was four-term mayor and past mayor. And also she's an investor and she owns three hotels. And she is, she owns a broker firm, the real estate broker firm. And she also is like, you know, she done so many stuff in our city. I think most of people know about her, so I don't have to say too much. But well, I really appreciate that she would like to spend her time to contribute and do the, to help the city for the economic developing. And thank Grace for coming over and joining the team. I am very honored to have her to join us. Thank you.
A second. So that was your nomination?
Yes, please. Can I have your?
Yeah, and I heard a second by Councilmember Say. And I heard a third from Councilmember Palito. And can we please vote?
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Congratulations, Commissioner Grace Hu. And could you please give the oath of office, Madam City Clerk? And you could please join your Commissioner, Councilmember Hong.
If you would please raise your right hand and state aye and state your name.
Aye, Grace Hu.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Jennifer, thank you very much. You want me to say first or you want to speak first? Anyway, good to see you all, Mayor Yokoyama and the members of city council and residents. Yeah, and it's nice to be here again. So thank you for the opportunity to serve the city again. Forty-eight years in business, built townhomes, single-family homes, and office building, shopping center. And the last project was Hilton Garden Inn in Pomona. So I think I, I want to use my experience to help the city for the future development. I can, I can help a lot. And thank you, and thank you, Jennifer, for giving me this opportunity to serve the city again and looking forward to see you, to work with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Grace. I just want to add on a few words. I mean, Grace is really a true entrepreneur. And I, when I first, I was so shocked when she says she's willing to contribute and do take this position. I was like, you know what? My first response, like, you are overqualified, you know? But I'm so glad and I'm looking forward to work with her and make our city a better city for us. And I thank Grace for your time and your passion. Still want to contribute to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's it?
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn, can you take a photo of the two of them?
Take a picture.
Okay, Glenn, so take a photo of them and the council colleagues will join them for a group photo. So let's, let's get ready for the group photo. Five C, Mayor's Annual Appointments. City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer to City Clerk Cindy Navo for this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This item before you is the Mayor's Recommendations for Appointments to Internal Ad Hoc Working Groups, External Boards, Commissions, and Committees and for Committee Member Service during the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six mayoral term. It is recommended the mayor present any desired nominations, after which the city council should receive public comment, then review and consider approving by majority action the mayor's nominations for service and direction to the city clerk to prepare and post an updated FPPC Agency Report of Public Official Appointments if needed and Appointments brochure to the city's website and to disseminate contact information to the respective external bodies and appointees or defer nominations to a future meeting. This concludes my report and I am available to answer any questions the city council may have. And this would be the appropriate time for the mayor to present nominations, if any.
Okay, so, um. So before I open it up for questions from the council and public comments, I will give the mayor's comments on decorum. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or conduct that disrupts the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue warnings or call for a recess to restore order or I can clear the chamber. The following comments. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods, all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. I will open public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the city council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Public comments pertain to the specific agenda item, except for Agenda Item Six, which is public comments, which are limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. So I will see if there's any questions from the council regarding Item Five C. Councilmember Say, do you have any questions?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong.
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Palito.
No question.
Mayor Protem Johnson. Okay. So seeing no questions from the council, I will now open for public comments on Item Five C, Mayor's Annual Appointments. I see we have a speaker. Linda Troxel. Could somebody please help her?
Linda Troxel, Jennifer Hong knows me well. Jennifer Hong knows me well. Been in touch with her because my home is poisoned, poisoned, poisoned. When asbestos, when popcorn ceiling containing asbestos dropped to the wall, to the floor with no roof covering, home poisoned seven years ago. And everybody that should have fixed it refused. And now finally, finally tried to have, to have all of the reports so that an expert can fix it, but need somebody like Jennifer to contact AAA to make sure that this has done. Everyone in, in building refused to help. Been over a year, everybody there, all their names and cards refused to help. Home poisoned, poisoned. And again, need to have, it is a toxic mess, mess, mess. And so, and finally, finally, somebody has to contact AAA so they can be fixed. Need somebody like Jennifer to do it. Tricia, Tricia refused to help. All of the asshole refused to help.
Thank you.
Over a year, over a year, with the building department, home vacant, seven years now. Been in a shelter, been in a shelter, and now in a system living. Because my wonderful home is poisoned, so now, and totally fucking out of money, money, out of money. Yeah, so now, so now, need somebody to reimburse me the millions it's cost me being out of my house for over seven years. Millions and millions that it's cost, cost me. And I want my house back. I want it back. It can be fixed. I have the program, the company that will fix it. And but I need somebody like Jennifer finally to do it. Tricia, Tricia, that you assigned to do it, refused to help. I yelled at her over at, at the city hall, refused to help. She had all, had all of the information and also sent again to you. So yeah, I need somebody finally to get and take, pay, pay to, at, contact AAA so that I can get my home that is a toxic mess, needs to have all of it, all totally fixed, which is feasible and can be done, for some water.
I will get it.
And so now, 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 want somebody who, who, who's gonna go and finally do it? Oh, yeah, everybody else refuses. And I tried, Tricia, Tricia put the blotch on it too. Talked to her, yelled at her, just like I'm yelling at you. Yelled at her, and she has all of the information. So now, I need money, I need money, money, money.
It's basically she wants to be compensated for asking.
I want my life back. So now, what, what, yeah, what can you do? What can you finally do? Gonna call, I'm gonna call AAA tomorrow so that they can, they can figure out I have millions of hundreds of the agents from that, from that company I talked to to try to get my, to get them to fix it. And of course, they won't do it. So now I need somebody, somebody like you to, to contact them. Doesn't matter, somebody like you to contact them. My home is a toxic mess that can be fixed. Just need the money to do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Linda Troxel, for sharing a public comment. Your five, your five minutes are up. Thank you so much. So,
Have all the proof here. Have all the proof here.
Okay, so thank you, Linda Troxel. Your five minutes are up.
What are you gonna do?
Can you turn off the mic, please?
Right now. I need help right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for helping. So this was Item Five C, Mayor's Annual Appointments. But I, as the Mayor, I used my discretion to allow Linda Troxel to make her public comment at this time, which was a public, general public comment in the nature of Item Number Six. But I wanted to allow you to make, I wanted to allow you to make your public comments because I see it's a, it was a challenge for you to get from your seat to the microphone. So thank you for sharing a public comment. We'll continue with Item Five C, Mayor's Annual Appointments. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Sei? Councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Palito?
No, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I do not have any Mayor's Annual Appointments to make at this time. So we will take no action on Item Five C. We will now move to Item Six, Public Comment. I already gave the, I already stated the Mayor's Comments on Decorum. Prior to tonight's meeting, the City Council received full text, unredacted copies of the one written comment submitted by the deadline for Item Six. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the Office of the City Clerk during regular business hours. I will be opening it for Item Six, Public Comments. Okay, Mrs. Troxel, I gave you, you had your, your five minutes of public comment. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Troxel. Thank you, sir. Good night, sir. Good night, Ms. Troxel. Okay, so Item Six, Public Comments. As I said earlier, Item Six, Public Comments should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda, but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. David Pileman.
David Pileman, so as I've spoken before, I can't give my address because the governor has ruled my street to be a sexist term. But hopefully after Christmas, I have been informed that I will be living at 7842 Sun Valley Way. The last time I spoke before the council was September 12, when I commented on the attempts of Mr. Barrows to cement his legacy as a councilperson. Much of his attempts in changing protocols were eliminated by the new council. And I'm not opposed to that idea. As it is, as it was before, each time I come, it's difficult to determine what issue I wish to address in the limited five minutes. I apologize to Ms. Johnson and Mr. Yokoyama. Some of the material I covered tonight is well-known to you. At least three of you know, the number one issue that my wife Joan has with this city is getting the Coyote Creek Bridge Project moving forward. Of course, this is a much larger issue, known to many as the Del Amo Boulevard Reconfiguration Project. This project extending from the Orange County border, Denny Street, to the 605 freeway. Ms. Hong and Ms. Sue, if you have not reviewed the full document for this larger project and seen the storyboards for the project, which I assume are still in Public Works, I encourage you to do this as soon as it is, it is convenient for you to do so. My wife feels that Mr. Galucci assured her that the bridge project would be completed by 2024. But I am here tonight to comment about a section of Mayor Yokoyama's column in the August 1 Los Cerritos Community News. Since our household has a skeptical view of this throwaway newspaper, it is possible that the mayor was misquoted. But it reads, in reference to the Southeast Gateway Line, as well as exploring the line's continued expansion to Orange County. I personally am opposed to the metro line coming into Cerritos. But those I share this view with say, David, don't waste your time. The area that the train will affect is so far from you in Cerritos. But my opposition is based on the fact that I do not restrict my movements just to the southeast portion of the city. Many years ago, a major street project was occurring at 183rd Street and Gridley. The company doing that, the repair, obviously did not know how busy this intersection could be. They were ill-prepared to deal with traffic congestion when they closed lanes to repave. So should we have to deal with the blockages and congestion every seven, every seven minutes when the train comes through? But now, with this hint that we may encourage the train to move all the way through Cerritos, that puts, this puts the bridge project in peril. And this is my biggest concern. I was informed by the previous Director of Public Works that the entity controlling the railway right-of-way across Del Amo Boulevard had given the bridge project permission to remove the train bridge over Coyote Creek. Should there be consideration of the rail line continuing to operate past Del Amo and over the creek, then the entire project planned for the bridge would need to be redrawn. Ms. Johnson and Mr. Lopez, you will recall that my wife and I were on the Lakewood Green Belt, adjacent to the proposed project, when House of Representatives member Michelle Steele announced a significant grant to this project. Unfortunately, the legislation which confirmed these monies was rescinded. But now Derek Tran has promised the mayor replacement funds. But he represents a significant portion of Orange County, who might be disposed to ask that those funds be dedicated to supporting the rail line expansion rather than the bridge. For those who attend events in Inglewood, we are aware a similar action occurred when Maxine Waters removed projected funds for connecting two metro lines potentially serving the Forum, SoFi Stadium, and the newly completed Intuit Dome. Even worse, for those of us in the southeast portion of the city, it might be the best place to put a station in Cerritos is the area near the Target, near the Cerritos Sports Center, near the Coyote Creek, where significant underutilized land is present. And if the Del Amo Bridge Project would be completed, even more land could be vacant.
David, could you wrap it up, please?
Yes. I fear that with a continued push toward extending the Metro Southeast Gateway Line will stall the bridge project. I am hopeful that I do not need to repeat why many in our area, be they Cerritos, La Palma, or Lakewood residents, wish this straightening, widening project be completed. Thank you.
I agree with that. Thank you, David. Good to see you. Good to see you last night at the community meeting at the senior center.
So were you quoted properly, sir?
I am supportive of the Southeast Gateway Line. The Orange County component was something that's decade or more away. So that was a comment put together by me with staff, planning for the long-term future of the city. My, my priorities today are the Del Amo Bridge Project and working together with the Los Angeles County Cities for the Southeast Gateway Line. I wanted to let you know, and please, I'm gonna look to you, look to you, City Manager. I wanted you to know that we did receive the $5 million from Congress member Steele. And Congress member Tran has submitted for an additional $5 million on top of that. So I am hopeful and cautiously optimistic that we will receive $5 million more in federal funding on top of the $5 million we've already received. Can you please give us an update on the $5 million plus $5 million plus the status of the Del Amo Bridge Project? Because I'd like David and Joan Pile, Joan Pileman to have that update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. As was mentioned, the city has been, has received the $5 million that was secured with the assistance of former Congresswoman Michelle Steele. City staff has been in contact with the appropriate agencies to work through the process of obtaining those funds. The funds are earmarked specifically for construction. So we are working to set those aside so that at the time the project is ready for construction, those funds can be utilized. Additionally, as was mentioned, current Congress member Tran has put in a request at Congress for the additional dollars. And if it's approved by Congress, then we would again work with the appropriate federal and state agencies to see those funds come down toward, for this project.
And we'll continue to keep you updated, okay, Mr. Pileman?
Thank you. We were unaware that the Michelle Steele money was still available to us. We thought that had been rescinded. So we, we were glad to get that information. But I, again, my, my, my question tonight is that, that the newspaper infers that you were encouraging a movement further. And that would, where I'm coming from, affect the bridge project because, you know, they'd still want to have the railway bridge there. So I'll, I'll sit at this.
I'll continue to be transparent. The City Council will continue to be transparent with the residents about the Del Amo Bridge Project and the Southeast Gateway Line. Thank you so much for your public comment. We have to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike McCoy? Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Thank you for attending. Vicky Kirkwood?
Hello, Council. I'm not an official resident of, sorry, Cerritos. But my, my grandparents own, have owned a house here for over 50 years. And I visit regularly. We'll also say I put some tax money in here. Oh, which is why I came to say I've been waiting on this for a long time, but I'm finally here. I just wanted to mention, at your debate for your special election I attended, there was a question for the whole panel about banning books at the public library. One person, one potential candidate said, yes, he'd do it. Thank God, he didn't win. One was a flat-out no. Thank you, Councilman Pudio. Did I say it right? And the others wavered. And the others wavered, which bothered me. Another potential candidate said that they would consider speaking to the people who wanted to ban books. This really bothered me. First of all, I was disappointed that no one elaborated on the significance of book bans because, as a city councilperson, you are sworn to uphold the Constitution. And banning books is a violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution. So hopefully, if anyone ever approaches you with this question again, you will educate this very, whatever, very, very uneducated person approaches you with this question and educate them on this. Also, the significance of book banning. Like I said, it bothered me that anyone would even entertain this thing because of the historical significance of book banning. We are about to repeat history. In fact, we are repeating history. People are being racially profiled and disappeared. Another part of this history that we're about to do is book banning. So to the person who decided that they would entertain this, I do not recommend, I do not suggest, I demand that you go and visit a Holocaust museum and see what happens when you disappear people, when you try to erase them from history, when you ban books, and there was a book burning even. You need to make sure you know the significance of this so that we do not repeat history, or rather, to continue to repeat history. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam Desai.
Thank you, Mayor, council member, city staff, friends, and everyone watching at home. My name is Sam Desai. I'm a long-term resident of City of Cerritos. And I want to say thank you to our council for recognizing South Asia, our heritage, and what we stand for. I'm from India, and we are celebrating our 79th independence. When I'm looking back at the country I came from, I'm absolutely proud of what my people have done, not just back at home, but the contributions to our community, our state, and the nation. For me, India's Independence Day is as important as America's Independence Day. India is a young, free nation. It shackled its chain from same colonialism that USA did. We have strong populations. We have our constitution. And I can definitely say, on behalf of all Indians, that I'm at shock that our constitution in America is no longer being honored and respected, even by the elected officials. So what do we do about it? We don't give up. What happens at a national stage, when we see that happen at the local council level, it begs us all to see how we look at each other. I know that when residents speak and we say something, that sometimes elected officials take things personally. I wish to address our Mayor Yokiyama, Councilmember Mark Polito, and Councilwoman Linda Johnson, that as we give you feedback, under no circumstances are you to believe that we are racists. You may not like some of the terminologies. You may not like some of the approaches, but honor and respect residents of Cerritos, both who has voted for you and those who have challenged you, to give their feedback without thinking that you are going to go and attack back. If you want conversations, all of you can always communicate. So please know that we stand with you, especially my Indian community. You're friends with us. You celebrate your birthdays, your children's birthdays, with members of my community. And when you do that, you don't see racism in our eyes. You will see that we have ability to give you feedback and share with you what we believe is right. Moving forward, there is one thing which is important for all of us, and specifically, our economic development. I want to congratulate our council for appointing different members of the commissions and the committee members. But as we know, Trump tariff is reality. And we do have some numbers. The numbers which comes from City Hall, the numbers which comes from our tax agencies, and specifically, numbers which comes from local, community, and business leaders. We are estimating that there is going to be about 5% drop in city revenues over next six months, which is amounting to about 1.3 million in sales tax revenues. It's 1.3 million just because of one tariff move. We can do the subject matter studies. We can work with city. We can work with anyone in the council who is willing to listen and take some actions. So what can our city do first? Show leadership. Get local organizations like SBDC. Get local customs brokers. Create a one-page pamphlet for local business owners how to deal with tariffs because there are different custom rates, and about 10% to 15% of tariffs means 5% to 15% of increase in our pricing. It's a common sense, and it is doable, and it will not take too much bureaucracy. And one more thing. Please focus on shop Cerritos program. We want shoppers to come in Cerritos, and this is an ideal time to act on economic development instead of just thinking about white papers. And again, thank you, council. And remember, we are one. And I sincerely hope that you do not believe that there is racism between council members and residents. Thank you.
Karit Chahan?
Good evening, Mayor, council. And I'm going to piggyback off something that Sam said. I am here because of your recognition for the South Asian Heritage Month. I too am a South Asian. I was born in India, but I left India when I was five. I moved to England, and then from England, I came to the US. So we have a diverse path. All Indians are not the same. We come from different places. We grew up in different areas. India is an ancient country. It is very new. It's 80 years old. When you think about it, 79. But India is known as India, Bharat, Hindustan, Hind. In fact, in Chinese, it's called Tianzhu. So it's been around a long time, but not. It was actually an area defined between the Indus River and Brahmaputra. And when the British colonized it, they left the whole area an entire mess. 580 regions. Some controlled by Brits, some collaboration, some independent. And that somehow morphed into one country that is struggling, just like the US, to find its identity. It has 21 constitutionally recognized languages. Therefore, you think about it, culturally, we are very different. Even though when you say, "South Asians are here," we're from India, from one part and another. And being Indian is more than just eating samosas, curries, or naans. One of the things that we celebrate, which actually happened on October 9, is an event that we call Rakshaband. This is the event where a sister will tie a wristband. Okay? This is a cultural thing. I have two biological sisters. I have six first cousins on my mom's side. I have six female cousins on my dad's side. They're all equally sisters. Other cousins that come along the way, they are also sisters. Why is this important? Because in the old culture, there are religious internal, sorry, there are some religious connotations, but take that away. Most cultures were male-dominated. So when the father passed away, the land went from the father to the sons, leaving nothing for their daughters. Therefore, the bond was, when you had a sister, it was your responsibility to take care of your sister, even after she was married. So when we talk about cultural differences, we need to understand that we're more than just dialogues and conversations. Dig a little deeper to understand who we are, not just as Indians, but as every other ethnic group that exists over here. We are too much into the superficial food and celebrity events that are just showcases. Understanding the nuance of a culture takes a lot more than that. And to that end, at some point, I'd like to have an event in the library where it's a learning opportunity, where we can talk about cultures, understand the significance of what it is that we're trying to seek. And it's through those lens that we will improve our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Karit. Catherine Pasquale. And Catherine is the last speaker on my list. Is there anybody else who wants to speak a public comment? Please submit your name. Catherine Pasquale.
Good evening, council. So first of all, yesterday was the first day back at school for ABC. I have been seeing tons of roads getting fixed, so thank you all. That has been making me very happy. However, first day of school drop-off chaos with roads diverting to reroute people to go right through a school drop-off lane. Probably not great for the first day of school. So I don't know. If the city could make sure they're looking at the school calendar for those things, that'd be excellent. But again, I do thank you guys for working on those roads. I know people have been complaining about the shape of our roads for a long time. So I don't want to say that as a negative. I just, let's keep in mind the school calendar, please. And you guys know, your parents, you know, first day of school, it's not just you drop off your kid at the curb, but you're looking for parking, you're walking them into their classroom. Like, it's different than other school days, right? Different vibe. The next thing is that the water rate studies, I think the next one is not, the one on the 28th is not for the potable water. But I would just like to ask that when that part of it comes back up, that the information presented is presented in a more understandable way to residents. Okay? I know I talked to some of the council members about this already. But basically, when we look at a chart that tells us that our water rate is going to increase by 50% the first year, but then really, the amount is 76% because really, it's not 50% because that wasn't a rate increase, that was a revenue adjustment, and it has to do with the number of inches of your thing, and then what if your bill isn't exactly $65? Like, no one can understand what that was, okay? I pride myself on being a mathy person. I immediately looked at the graph, and I was like, "Oh, wait. The area under the curve tells me that in the long term, with 2B, we'll pay more than we will in the long term with 2A. Why do we want to do that?" Like, I'm not, I'm not unable to look at and understand data, but this was not very comprehensible or helpful, even when I looked into it further and like took longer to try to understand it. So I really request that you guys come up with something that is a little more understandable and digestible to the residents because I'm not sure how the residents are supposed to have input or how the council members are supposed to think about how this will affect the residents if the way it is presented to us and to them is so confusing. So that's my main thing that I would ask for. You need to have different, like, different things laid out. And then the other thing is, I'm not sure, okay, the way I'm thinking about this is, we can buy the new car and do the $42 million of upgrades to our system, right? Or we can keep fixing the old car and do $23 million of patchwork duct tape repairs to our system. But why is it that the city's only going to kick in help for the duct tape option? Why won't the city kick in any of its funds for the buy the new car option? The buy the new car option seems like the right long-term solution, but I'm not sure why we are using general fund support only for the duct tape option and not for the new car option. That just doesn't seem very logical to me. You guys know I've spoken before, like, I'm always for us doing things for our city, for the public. Let's keep things in good shape. And so if we're saying to really do this comprehensive investment to our infrastructure to make it better, I don't know. I'm not, it doesn't really make sense to me that it's like, "Well, you can only do that option if the residents pay," hold on, I can pull up the number, "240% more in the first year." So basically, your water rate would be 3 and 1/2 times what it is now. That's the only way you can have the good one because we won't kick in any money for the good option. We'll only kick in money for the bad option. I don't know. It just doesn't seem super logical. I'm not sure who all the players are in working on that, but I would really like to see that information come back in a more understandable way and in a way that gives people some better options. That might be October 23 because it seems like August 28 is for different topics, if I'm reading this correctly. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. So, City Manager, when is the agenda item for the water rates coming back?
Thank you. With the input that was provided by the city council, which was preliminary input at the last meeting, we are working to prepare a water rate study, a final study, that will have the additional information that will help residents digest the proposal. And that'll come back to the city council in October.
Okay. And thank you, Alvin, for talking to Mrs. Pasquale. So Alvin, Drew, Robert, let's, we heard some good comments, some great comments from Mrs. Pasquale about presenting the information in a way that is understandable and clear to our residents moving forward. And let's please consider those specific comments that she shared.
Will do, sir. And if I may add, please, we are planning, staff is planning a series of meetings. We haven't yet announced dates, but we are planning a series of open houses to invite members of the community to come and learn more about our water system and what the needs are currently. And we can be happy to answer questions and dive deep into the numbers as needed.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar, oh. So I'm looking at my list. I don't see any other speakers. So seeing, seeing no other speakers, I will close the public comment period. Consent calendar, the next item is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Second?
I heard a motion to approve from council member, say, even though she didn't turn on her microphone?
Sorry.
And then I, and then I got a second from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. Let's vote to, let's vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar.
The motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, there's no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting. So we go to item 9A, self-storage facilities. City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item follows up on direction provided by the city council at the last meeting to bring back an informational report regarding existing municipal code regulations. to bring back an informational report regarding existing municipal code regulations as they relate to self-storage facilities in Cerritos. This item will be presented by Director of Community Development, Kristin Aguilera, and following her presentation, she and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. As Mr. Lopez indicated, the item before you this evening is an informational report regarding existing city regulations for self-storage facilities. At the July 28th city council meeting, the council requested information regarding self-storage facility regulations to help evaluate potential opportunities for amending current regulations to promote economic development and support property owners. Self-storage facilities are regulated under Section 2240-730 of the Cerritos Municipal Code, which establishes criteria for their location, quantity, site design, and operational standards. Should the city council wish to amend these regulations, a development code amendment and related environmental analysis would be required, with the scope, cost, and timing dependent on the extent of any proposed amendments. Details of existing regulations are provided in tonight's agenda report. At this time, staff recommends that the city council review and discuss the information provided and provide direction to staff regarding any potential amendments to the municipal code. This concludes my presentation. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Community Development Director Kristin Aguilera, thank you. I'm going to see if there's any questions from the council. Councilmember Say, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, mayor. I do have a question, actually. I really like this, another business opportunity for all of us in here, even the residents here, too. A lot of us, the storage hour, I mean, like my house, I only have a half-site to park my car, the other side is like junk, you know, kind of thing, trying to clean up. Every time I clean up, and you know, messy again, which is, I really, I will keep neat today facility. But I do have a question about the page number three, which is the maximum building height, because I know the new train has been changed a lot. You know, I just went to a meeting about Tang Hongting. The height, actually, I know in regular settings, 35 feet, right? Apparently, we're adding another five feet for the needs to meet the current standard. So have any staff looking to this height? Because I did want to look at the Zoom district, the single-family, multifamily, commercial, industry. The needs mostly, actually, for the residential rooms, the room is about 25 to 35 feet, versus the multifamily apartment zones, 35 to 75 feet. Commercial one, they can be even higher than that. I was hoping we can kind of increase a little bit higher, more than 35, or they can bring it back to the planning commission to discuss if there's a need. Any possible?
Yes, thank you, councilwoman Say. Generally speaking, most commercial and industrial zones in the city of Cerritos have a maximum building height of 35 feet. And that maximum height limit was established to lessen impacts to adjacent properties, adjacent commercial properties, but also in scenarios in Cerritos, you have adjacent sensitive land uses, such as single-family residential, schools, et cetera. And so the 35-foot height limit established for self-storage facilities is consistent with the zoning regulations found throughout Cerritos. I will also add that there are a few areas in the city that have higher than 30 feet, 35 feet. Largely, the regional commercial center and across the street, the Cerritos Town Center, Area Development Plan 2. And the increased height, maximum height limits for those areas were designed for office purposes, rather than industrial purposes, or in this case, self-storage purposes. So when the regulations were established back in 2019, the 35-feet maximum under the permitted zoning requirements was established for a multitude of those reasons.
Yeah, I see that, because it's like back in 19 something, that's quoted there.
2019.
We're facing to the new coming years, and a lot of it has been changed, you know that. Like even the Tang Hong, they become a trial level, right? Went up to higher than the regular Tang Hong. And I know you allowed them 35 plus five feet in the last meeting that I attended, the PowerPoint presentation, not by you, by the, I think, county people, probably. So in that case, in the future, so any commercial people, they may ask for an increase of five feet instead of 35 feet high, is any possible?
So generally speaking, the 35 feet is established in the municipal code, and that is established for the self-storage facilities under the industrial and MC2 zone. Should the city council this evening provide direction to amend that 35 feet for these zones and self-storage facilities in those zones? Staff would have to assess the impacts, so land use impacts, aesthetic impacts, et cetera, through what is the environmental analysis in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And based on that environmental analysis, determine if there are impacts of level of significant as a result of amending the code to allow for, in this case, self-storage facilities or those uses to exceed the 35 height limit. I would also note that the maximum building height, as I mentioned, is consistent with other industrial zones in the city. And so should we explore, should the city council direct staff to explore increasing that height above 35 feet? It would be applicable, we would have to explore whether it'd be applicable just to self-storage facilities or other uses within those zones, right? So industrial buildings or other uses in the MC2 zones.
What is the staff recommendation? What do you guys think, the point of view of this increase of, instead of 35, go up to a little 40? I'd like to ask manager, if you don't mind, mayor.
I'll add that the item tonight is an informational report on existing regulations, as was directed by the city council. We'd be happy to take any direction, as was mentioned, for items to bring back if needed. All the self-storage facilities in Cerritos today have been able to comply with this requirement, and so it's something that the market has been able to support. I haven't heard of any request, at least recently, for like a higher self-storage facility. It hasn't come up on our end.
Yeah, just like Catherine just mentioned about some city already increased the height already, instead of 35, gone to 40. It's a lot of changes right now compared 20 years ago. And a lot of update, even the, when you're trying to build an additional building behind the back, it used to be three feet, and we increased to five feet. I think that's a lot. And then some city changed to four feet and three feet, so give a resident more capacity to build additional needs for the family. As you know, Cerritos have an over impact, and there's a lot of people living in one house, because they're not, I mean, able to buy a house or rent a house outside, so they have so many, two or three families moving in the one house now. So I thought this would be really, if we can take a look into the future, to discuss about this code. And compared to other cities, what is the current practice? And whether they just keep the old practice, I mean, that's how I see it. I don't know my council member, think about that. Just have the staff to look into that code. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
Yes, my question is the self-storage facility. If we convert or added more of the self-storage, my question is, then we're not getting the actual use of the warehouse, and it's not generating any property tax or even sales revenue, am I right? At least the sales revenue.
It is correct that self-storage would not generate sales tax. There are, and warehousing generally wouldn't unless the business that does the warehousing also has a point of sale, in which they're also doing sales associated with the warehouse. But it is correct that self-storage would not be a sales tax generating use.
So we are trying to see if we can have a new regulation to build more self-storage facility? Is that what the?
The item for you this evening is an informational report. I was directed to bring back to the council information on our existing regulations in the municipal code. But if there is direction this evening from the city council, we can bring back any updates.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hong. Any questions? Councilmember Polito?
I do not. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So so regarding self-storage facilities in our city of Cerritos, for whatever reason, the current state of this, the current state of the municipal code regulations pertaining to self-storage facilities, key among all of these regulations is one of the rows in this chart that's on page two and three is the quantity. Under our municipal code, the city of Cerritos restricts the city of Cerritos to have a maximum of four self-storage facilities. And that's how many we have in Cerritos, as it shows on page three. So the city of Cerritos is allowing an oligopoly to exist in our city for self-storage businesses. And an oligopoly does not allow the free market to work. So my question, Kristin, is in light of the city of Cerritos enforcing an oligopoly of self-storage businesses on the residents of Cerritos, what other businesses in the city of Cerritos do we restrict the number of businesses?
Thank you, Mayor Yokiyama. I am not aware of businesses where we restrict quantity. Through minimum distance requirements between two like businesses, the city has ways of limiting the quantity of businesses, but I'm not.
What businesses do we have, does our municipal code specifically limit the quantity of that type of business?
Other than self-storage facilities, I am unaware of any other businesses that are expressly regulated based on quantity.
Okay, thank you, thank you, because as a council member since 2017, I'm unaware of any other businesses either. For some reason, the city of Cerritos is allowing, supporting, enforcing oligopoly of self-storage businesses. And my understanding of that, when you take into account the free market, that's good for the four businesses, and that's bad for the consumer. And is it correct that under these ordinances, self-storage businesses are only allowed within industrial or industrial-commercial 2 zones?
That is correct.
Yeah. And as the city manager pointed out, those businesses do not primarily, those businesses in industrial and industrial-commercial 2 zones primarily are not selling taxable goods, sales taxable goods to consumers directly.
We do have a good amount of industrial uses within the industrial zone that do have point of sale in Cerritos. But as city manager Lopez indicated, the four self-storage facilities do not generate, self-storage facilities in general do not generate sales tax for the city.
Okay, and and thank you, Mike. And I'm going to be opening up the public comment, and I would love to get all of yours' public comments. Thank you, Mike. And just because you made that statement, isn't it possible, because you made that statement, isn't it possible that if these businesses are selling packaging items, packaging supplies, boxes, containers, aren't they supposed to be charging sales tax on that? And the sales tax is supposed to be handled the way any other merchandise being sold to a consumer is taxed and sent to the state, and the state sends us our share?
If I can get clarification, are you asking if self-storage facilities who sell packaging goods, et cetera, if they generate sales tax? Yes, if the self-storage facility sells packaging equipment in Cerritos, then a minimal sales tax would be generated. So I stand corrected.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for confirming what I understand, that we are not enforcing oligopoly on our residents for any other type of business in our city, except for self-storage facilities. I'm going to go to public comment. I will now open for public comments on this item. I don't see anybody on the list. Are there any other speakers on this item? Okay, Mike, please feel free to come and speak at public comment, sir. And you have up to five minutes.
Well, the discussion just piqued my curiosity. Yes, it seems strange that the city would put a limit on any type of business, agreed. But maybe the city had motivation for that, because it's not a big money driver. It's not going to create much sales tax. You're not going to make a lot of money selling packaging tape. So is there, and that's been the case since you've been around, 2017, and longer. Why the topic now? Is there demand? Are there citizens asking the city to provide more storage? And aren't there other storage facilities on the other side of 605 in other cities where there's ample competition? And the question about 40 feet, so is there some other motivation for asking this? Because some developers asking to add more storage in the city? So maybe there's some behind-the-scenes activity going on. Any comment about my questions?
Can I make a comment, mayor? Would that be possible?
Go ahead, councilmember.
Thank you, mayor. Nobody contacted me, just my personal study. When issues brought up, I always look in the the regulation and requirement. As a councilwoman, my job also is to see what is the other most common practice right now. What I see is, because you know the land is more expensive now, right? So if you can go up a little bit higher, they can store more things in that building. That is a benefit to the business people. I have no other content, no other connection with that. It's just my personal study. So the whole thing I'm saying, we should allow for tall buildings, as the land is getting more expensive now. That was my point.
Now, could some existing warehouse space in Cerritos, because I used to rent warehouse space in Cerritos, and there are potentially empty vacant warehouses, be repurposed for storage? I know that there are some, I don't know if it's legal or not, but I know some warehouses in Cerritos have been subdivided and are selling portions of warehouses. Could warehouse be repurposed, if there's demand for more personal storage? Could existing warehouse space be converted for storage? As an alternative to building something new? Anyway, that's just, the topic brought up piqued my interest, and I think it's worth considering. If four is not enough, then add more. But is there really demand? What brought this up?
Thank you, Mike. Anything else? And this oligopoly situation also has piqued my interest, and that's why I'm very interested in the reasons that we are enforcing an oligopoly. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments, councilmember Say?
Thank you, mayor. Once again, I don't know what my colleagues looking at. I was thinking, pointed the staff to study the, what is the maximum building height? I know the residential rules on the chapter 22.2, residential. That is only, I know the residential rules on the chapter twenty-two point two residential focus actually is on thirty-five, including fans and wells. The general high code is thirty-five feet, but didn't mention about anything about a commercial building. And I know it's getting more expensive to the, to the owner, and we do know there's some, uh, mayor proteins to mention about sales tax. People do package. I remember one of the, I think it was the last. Last council meeting or one before, we approved one of the warehouse selling the cell sunglasses or something, right? They do contribute the sales tax. So I thought it'd be really good to help the business people. That's my point here. So I don't know what my council member think about it. Just have the staff to study. What is, uh, the best interest in other business people to support them?
Anything else?
That, that did. Thank you.
Council member Hong, any, any? Questions or comments?
One more question. When you say study, is we're gonna do it by our city staff or we have to pay for outside, um, consultant?
Um, if there is any direction tonight to explore possible amendments to our municipal code. Uh, we could do some research at the staff level and come back with ideas or options to consider. Um, but if there's direction to actually amend the ordinance, um, the requirement of the California Environmental Quality Act would be to do. Um, certain studies and depending on the extent of changes potentially proposed, they may require, um, outside, uh, consultant studies. Um, especially if we're getting into, um, more dense, uh, more in, uh, intensified, uh, uses. Um, that may require, um, some advanced study that would be at a cost to the city. Um, if there's a minor change, um, we can, we can look at that and see whether there would be a, an impact, but depending on what's potentially proposed by the council. Um, we can begin with some ideas to consider if there's a request for information to come back.
Thank you.
Council member Palito, any questions or comments?
Yeah, uh. I understand that. From the staff report, which is helping to refresh my memory because. Twenty eighteen was a bit ago. Uh, I was on the council. But from the staff report, it mentions that a temporary moratorium was enacted in twenty eighteen. And that it was, uh, subsequently. Studied, right? And based on those efforts, uh, in twenty nineteen. Says the council established regulations to allow for. Further reg- regulations. So I, my, my question is this to, to the Mr. City Manager and to Ms. Agula, if she could elaborate. Have the conditions that existed at the time that the council took action. At that time. To establish moratorium. Do those conditions still continue? Or do they, have they ceased to, uh, exist? And if so, um. Is it the recommendation of the, the city to, um. No longer engage in a oligopoly and to return back to the free market, uh, competition? So that consumers won't be adversely impacted?
Uh, the, the moratorium that was referred to, uh, did end and the, and the regulations were adopted, uh, at the conclusion of the moratorium. And, um. You know, the, the market has changed, you know, COVID has changed a lot in terms of, uh, impact to brick-and-mortar businesses. Uh, so I would say, just given that, we have a different real estate landscape than we did several years ago. We have no, I'm not aware of, of any recent requests for, uh, self-storage facilities in Cerritos. That may be because people have looked at our code and see what we have a cap. Um, but I'll defer to Ms. Agula if she wants to add anything with regard to, uh, market conditions or requests for, uh, permits at, on her end.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Um, I can attest, uh, we, uh, I'll provide a little bit of background. Um, one of the reasons why the moratorium was established was because back in twenty eighteen, we were getting frequent inquiries for self-storage facilities. And prior to the twenty nineteen regulations, self-storage facilities were not identified in the Cerritos Municipal Code as a specific use. Staff internally and, and the city council, we classified self-storage facilities as a warehouse use, just general warehouse. And so there were not specific regulations at that time to, um, which zones would be a most appropriate to lessen impacts to surrounding properties. So in twenty eighteen, due to the increase of inquiries and the fact that there weren't any specific regulations for the specific use. The city council adopted the moratorium to allow staff to appropriately assess. We conducted a survey of over forty cities to figure out what other cities were doing. Whether they were permitted, conditionally permitted, were they a specific use, were they warehouse use, et cetera? And, um, you are correct, the, the moratorium was established and then extended to give the city a total of one year to assess. And, uh, the result of that was the specific regulations for the specific use of self-storage. We today do not, I haven't received an inquiry about a self-storage facility. Gosh, probably since before, um, the regulations were established, other than the reu- or excuse me, the, uh, uh. Sailing, sell, sale of existing self-storage facilities. So, for example, there's one over on Crusader that changed. Um, but other than that, uh, the city does not generally receive inquiries on, uh, self-storage facilities.
And just as a follow-up, uh, since, uh, we haven't had any recent inquiries, would you say that's because we have a moratorium? Uh, or, or because somehow there's, they've lost interest in self-storage businesses? And if, uh, if that's the case. Have the surrounding cities been, um, uh, locating? Uh, new storage facilities that would otherwise been open to our community, uh, if we didn't have a moratorium?
Generally speaking, um, I, I can't speak to why we haven't been giving, uh, uh, getting inquiries. I would agree with Mr. Lopez. It, it could be that because we do have the cap on four and that there are four existing, and so. A review of our municipal code would show another self-storage entity that we have met the cap. Um, I will say, um, one of the self-storage facilities, um, was originally, uh, to be a sectioned off. A portion of the facility was going to be for self-storage of personal goods, et cetera. And then the other half was going to be leased to Cerritos Auto Squares for parking, uh, dealers for parking purposes. And that extra space stor- uh, the businesses' extra space storage, um, did recently, uh, complete improvements to. Build out that area that was designated for surplus vehicle parking to, uh, build out for self-storage purposes. So, um, based on conversations with extra space storage at that time, the demand was there from Cerritos residents, the Cerritos community. Um, I just, I, I don't have market information based on the demand of self-storage operators to build in the city. If the city council, uh, is interested in doing so, as I mentioned, when we surveyed the forty cities, it was back in twenty eighteen. We haven't conducted a new survey recently to see what other cities are doing or even what are their existing regulations. We can also do that if so directed, but. Or we could, uh, reach out to test the market, see if the demand is there.
My, my guess is that if we had some demand, then all of a sudden we put a moratorium and then suddenly we stop getting in, uh, inquiries? I mean, it, it seems pretty obvious to me that maybe. Those who are interested in developing. Opening up. Storage facilities. Won't go to cities that have a moratorium on it. So, uh, not only are we supporting an oligopoly, uh, we're also, uh. It's kind of a self-inflicted wound where we're, um, missing out on potential business opportunity. Bringing new businesses, uh, to our community. And also, um, probably unintended. Punishing our own consumers. I would imagine that, uh, uh, people or. Yeah, people who want to use Cerritos-based storage facilities probably live closest to Cerritos, if not in Cerritos. A- a- as opposed to having to go, uh, to further ci- cities, uh, where they could find, um, a better rate. Then probably what's the, the rate now. I, I, I don't know. I, I don't have a storage facility in Cerritos anymore. I, I did for like twenty years. But, um. I don't anymore. Uh, and I'm sure that there's a demand amongst Cerritos residents to have storage facilities. So, uh. I'm also intrigued. But by what we're learning tonight, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Mayor's, um. Uh, comments. Highlighting, uh, this aspect of, uh, the report. And so now I would be very eager to hear the questions and the comments going forward from our mayor. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, uh, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this up, but before, uh, I take any formal position on this, there are a couple of questions I'd like for staff to come back with. Uh, are the other four storage units that we have at capacity? And. If we're looking to do future storages, can you remind me again, what zone would they fall under?
Self-storage facilities are currently permitted in the industrial M-zone and the industrial two-zone, industrial-commercial-two-zone, MC2.
Alright, so they basically would be part, mostly in the industrial portion of Cerritos. They would take up space that's already there. Alright, yeah, that, that's all, just really what the, uh, market is for having. Storage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, um.
Mayor Protem can have one more thing to say if you don't mind.
Council member say, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, just imagine that we are not really focused on the residential storage. Look at the parking overnight, how many cars are parking in the street? And most of us, I mean, I, I don't, for me as a sample, we use half of the, uh, park, uh, the. Parking place in our house, I mean, the garage, and halfway, some of them full-taking by the, our own thing, because we all been here living forty, fifty years already there. You know, it's lots of junk and then we didn't wanna throw away. I even have my son's, the favorite shoes hanging there by the door. So I'm hoping if we can, if reasonable the price, if you increase the height, they can make a loft. In one storage room, another storage room, another storage room, so that make convenient for the residential use if the price reasonable. And we encourage people to store their thing in the storage room. And of course, there was some payment there, if it reasonable for the resident. That'd be really great, so that way we can really see a clean street and. Cause I might, one of my house areas, almost ten, twelve cars parking on the one side. And so I'm just thinking, in the future, maybe we should looking for what's the best interest for the residents too, not just only for business. Cause I know some city does have that kind of, uh, um, uh, facility and, uh, storage for the residential, pe- for the residents. So that was the reason I bought us here. I, I know recently one of the program that we're going on right now, they, instead of thirty-five feet, you adding another five feet there. To ma- to make sure they're high enough for the new townhome or something like that. So. But I thought, why wouldn't, why don't we use that on the commercial? Cause the way you have one, the maximum building height, mostly on chapter twenty-two point two residential is thirty-five feet. But we're talking about the commercial and that we're talking about the demand, maybe people just wanna come here, it's too expensive here. If we can build a little higher, they can store more than they can afford, and of course, we'll attract more people to come.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, um. What, what? What's been confirmed to me by our Director of Community Development is that. Uh, for self-storage facilities in Cerritos. In our municipal code regulations, this is the one business that we are limiting. The number of that type of business. The city of Cerritos is allowing an oligopoly to, uh, exist. For this one type of business, self-storage facilities. And what we, what we know from, um. Economics. Is. Like the extreme, the most extreme version, which is monopoly. O- oligopolies reduce competition. And can negatively impact consumers through higher prices, lower quality and limited choices. And these market structures of oligopoly can also stifle innovation. And create opportunities for collusive behavior between. The. Businesses that are in the oligopoly. Like price fixing. So. That's my. Concern. Because. This is what we've learned. In, in school, in college, in life, we learned that. The free market. Can be good for consumers for lower prices, more choices. And monopolies and oligopolies. We hear. As. Consumers, as citizens, as residents of Cerritos. We, we, we understand that monopolies are bad, oligopolies are bad for us as consumers, as residents. And, um. However, I will just say, cause I, I wanna be factual. I did realize there is one business that we, one other business that I know we restrict. We restrict it completely. We prohibit completely one business. We prohibit vaping businesses. We have zero vaping businesses in Cerritos because for health and safety reasons because of the vaping epidemic. The city of Cerritos took a strong position against allowing vaping products to be sold within our city of Cerritos specifically to our youth. Okay? So that is the one other business that I thought of, that we have a restriction on the number. And I'm thankful that the city of Cerritos does not allow, does prohibits vaping businesses in our city. And the sale of vaping products in our city. But going back to this. I want to be a business-friendly city. But I don't want to be. Overly friendly to the point that. We are. Harming our residents or even potentially harming our residents. I want to be pro-business and pro-residents and be reasonable and balanced. And I. I'm concerned we're making the self-storage facility business a lucrative business. In Cerritos for the business owners. Um, you mentioned it, I was gonna say it, Kristin, is. In, in two thousand twenty-four. Um, this also caught my attention ahead of this meeting. Tonight. One of these four self-storage facilities in our city. Was sold in two thousand twenty-four. So. The buyer. Bought. The two thousand four hundred sixty-unit self-storage facility in Cerritos in two thousand twenty-four. For ninety-one million dollars. This is the extra space storage at seventy-nine hundred Crusader Avenue next to the six oh five freeway, as reported by the Orange County Business Journal. At the time this article came out, the deal works out to three hundred fifty dollars per square foot. A typical price in the US self-storage market during the second quarter was one hundred thirty-nine dollars. According to Cushman and Wakefield. And, um. The, the, uh, CBRE, which represented the seller. Of this self-storage facility for ninety-one million dollars, was quoted as saying in the article. This is the largest. Single-property self-storage sale in history. So. We need to be. We need to be. Aware of our residents. We need to be. Business-friendly, we need to be pro-business, but. We have to also use our. Our heads and look at. our heads and look at what's going on here with this oligopoly. And we need to protect our residents, and we need to give them not higher, not higher prices, not lower quality, not limited choices. We need to somehow work to give them lower prices, higher quality, and more choices. And prevent collusive behavior by letting the oligopolists know that potentially more self-storage facilities can come into Cerritos if you try to raise your prices too high. So regarding the staff recommendation, I make a motion I make a motion to direct staff to bring back to, as required, to bring back to the planning commission or the city council an amended ordinance that removes the limitation of the number of self-storage facilities that may operate in the city of Cerritos.
Second, and Mr. Mayor, can I add on to that?
You are suggesting a friendly amendment?
Just to add on to it.
Okay, go ahead.
Friendly. Can staff do their due diligence to find out what you're alluding to happen? I mean, you talked about the potential for collusion, and then what you just talked about was correct me if I'm wrong, was that the most recent developed storage facility?
That is correct.
I mean, it sounds like because of government intervention that folks made out to the tune of, what, three times more than they would, that they would have otherwise gotten if there was no government intervention?
Not quite three times, but close.
You make a good point, and you talked about the potential for collusion when oligopolies are encouraged. And then, not just encouraged, because it was a temporary moratorium, and then it made it permanent.
So what are you suggesting be included in the?
Just to do due diligence and find out what might have happened there.
Okay, can, my motion is to include that due diligence and information to be provided in the agenda report that brings back the amended ordinance, amended municipal code regulations that removes the quantity cap of four and removes it to have no cap. Is that good for your second?
Yeah, and my motivation is because I don't like what I'm hearing.
Okay, so, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Johnson, did you have a comment?
I'd like to make a substitute motion. My substitute motion, I think, is maybe the questions that we all have up here is that staff to come back again with a second report before we make any decisions. I'm not in a position to make a formal decision yet.
I second that.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we would vote on the substitute motion first, which is a motion to bring back additional information in a subsequent report related to additional information on price per square foot, potential heights, and other information that was discussed.
So this is on the table right now to vote for?
That would be the motion.
Gotcha.
That's on the floor.
So the substitute, we're going to vote on the substitute motion first. I will go on record that I am not interested in the substitute motion. I want to get rid of this oligopoly sooner. But the substitute motion is before the council?
The motion passes on a vote of three to two.
Item nine B, Sister City Program, city manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item nine B is also an item that was requested by the city council at the last meeting. It's an informational report, providing some history regarding our sister city programs in the past. This presentation will be given by Director of Community and Cultural Services, Annie Hilton. And following your presentation, she and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As noted in the agenda report, the city has a long history of involvement with sister cities. I will now present a few slides to illustrate some highlights of the sister city program. The city's first sister city relationship started in the nineteen sixties with Itapachanga, a city in Brazil with dairy farms. In nineteen sixty-five, Itapachanga named a city square after the city of Dairy Valley, known as Prasa Dairy Valley. Prasa Dairy Valley is still located in Itapachanga and features sculptures of cows, walking paths, and landscaping. A sign in Prasa Dairy Valley explains the history of the square's name and mentions Cerritos. Photos of the sign and the translation into English are included in exhibit two of the report. In nineteen sixty-eight, the city of Cerritos named four streets in honor of the occasion of a visit of a delegation from Itapachanga. The street names, including Bahia Drive, Brazil Street, Espanyra Drive, and Itapachanga Lane, are still in use today. In October nineteen eighty-seven, a sister city relationship was formalized between Cerritos and Panchao Taiwan. In nineteen eighty-seven, Panchao gave a large vase to the city. The vase is currently on display on the third floor of the Cerritos Library. In two thousand fourteen, representatives from Panchao, which had become New Taipei City, visited Cerritos and were presented with a plaque with a key to the city by Mayor Marque Peralito. In nineteen ninety-nine, the city council approved the establishment of a sister city relationship with Loretto, Mexico, in response to a request from members of the community. The Friends of Loretto, the Hispanic Firefighters Association, City of Cerritos, and the County of Los Angeles facilitated the donation of a pumper fire truck and firefighting equipment to the city of Loretto. In March two thousand and six, a delegation from Loretto attended the dedication of the Cerritos Air Disaster Memorial in the Cerritos Sculpture Garden, and at that time, the Friends of Loretto facilitated the donation of an ambulance by AMR to the city of Loretto. Loretto Mayor Aureli Arce Peralta participated in the thirtieth anniversary Cerritos Air Disaster Remembrance held in two thousand and sixteen. The city has a sister city designation policy that defines the purpose of the sister city relationship, policy directive, and process for formation. As previously directed by the city council, staff will prepare a report for review by the Economic Development Commission related to the adoption of a sister city in the Philippines that will incorporate research conducted by Mayor Protem Johnson. After obtaining input from the EDC, staff will present a report to the city council for review and consideration of adopting a sister city in the Philippines. It is respectfully recommended that the Cerritos City Council review and consider the information provided in this report, and open public comment, receive and file the information, and provide any additional direction to staff. This concludes my report, and at this time, city manager Robert Lopez and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Annie Hilton. Do we have any questions from the council, councilmember Say?
Thank you, Mayor. I like the idea of sister cities for two communities from different places in the world working together for the, something that can bring the people together. I think that's the whole purpose that we want to. But however, I do have a concern. In order to build a good sister city, we must build a relationship based on the outcome and the results. What I see the benefit of a sister city is cultural exchange, educational partnership, economic business opportunity, policy share-sharing, community engagement, and the last one, the joint project. And from the experience of the ABC Unified School District, we do have with the other sister in Japan, and we still continuously see each others and bring the culture, bring the education, exchange students. But however, in our Cerritos city, I don't see that. It appears like we just give, share their proposition, and then take a picture and sculpture, and then the relationship is being stopped. Such as Panchao changed to New Taipei City. We don't really have that much connection even with the local business people. And if we're going to look into it, I'm just hoping that we will make some changes in there, really focus on what is we want, what is outcome we're looking into. That will be really bring the benefit of the sister city. That's my point here, sir.
Did you have any questions?
I have a question about, actually, I read this policy clearly now, such as the, usually, the staff doesn't get involved. So the city council, my question's in the future, maybe we should start connecting, working with the local residents, business owner, put in the Chamber of Commerce, get them involved with that. So let them to make the decision and then make a better connection with the country that would like to join with us, share the policy, share the project with us together. I think that really truly will carry on, rather than just stop there. So that's my motion. If we can in the future, let this work with the Chamber of Commerce. We have a new Chamber of Commerce coming out, and put the responsibility on them with the local business people involvement. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
I guess I have the question from before, and I'm going to repeat one more time. It's not like I oppose to it, I just look at the history that we do have sister cities from before, but for whatever reason, it always like just died down. We have no further follow-up or actually gaining any benefits or do anything out of it. And I was just thinking, if we want to do it, we have to do it good, do it right, instead of just wasting the time to just like sign the contract and we all become sister city, but then what's next? You know, we all talk about, yes, culture, you know, exchange, you know, maybe economic, whatever, it's great. But has it really happened? No, but I hope that, you know, I know the situation has been changed. If we really want to do it, I just want to make sure if we sign up, we have people really follow up, and it's really going to benefit our city as well. It's not against it personally, I do like it, it's good. Because this international business, I mean, is good for our city, then that would be good for us too. If we can really stimulate and make the profit and encourage more people to know about city of Cerritos and have more people come, more businessmen come to invest in our city, that would be great. So I just think that if indeed we're going to do this, I want we, I want the city to really take it seriously and focus on it and start it very carefully, like, is this the right move? And if it's right, let's go for it. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Peralito, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask staff, when establishing a sister city, is it not recommended that we partner with a nonprofit organization?
So the adopted policy as it relates to sister cities actually requires that it be initiated by a resident group. The city's role would be to have a ceremonial role, a resolution, a signing ceremony, let's say, formal visits. But the work and the communication involved in, according to our policy, would be to have either a community group or some individuals involved in initiating and taking the lead on that effort.
Yes, and also, isn't it that the, this is going to go back to the Economic Development Commission? It's already gone through the ad hoc sister city committee, and there's been discussion that we would let the Economic Development Commission seek out organizations, correct?
The direction that was given by the city council was for a potential sister city program to go to the Economic Development Commission, so that is currently in the works.
Great, thank you.
Going to open it up for public comment. Mike McCoy, I don't see him. Adrian Ayub.
Hi, it's Ayub.
Thank you.
Sister cities can be a beautiful thing. As councilmember Say alluded to, we have a sister city relationship with the city of Kokami Gahara, Japan. Well, in high school, one of my many pursuits was the Japanese language. I took Japanese for three years. I hosted a student from Kokami Gahara, Japan. Or excuse me, Seki, Seki Gahara, is it Seki or Kokami Gahara?
Kokami Gahara.
Kokami Gahara, yeah. Seki Gahara is where they had a historic battle in sixteen hundred to decide the future of Japan. And it was a riveting cultural exchange. The student I hosted, they published in their newspaper. I got to see his passion, such as kendo. As far as speaking on the sister city trip and why our community needs transparency on it, I've seen how these sister city arrangements often work in practice. My own aunt, when she was mayor of Huntington Park, helped to make our family's Mexican hometown of Alpa Zagatecas a sister city. It sounded great on paper, it made for good headlines. But you know what it actually did for the residents of Huntington Park? Nada, nothing. No economic benefit, no cultural programs for local families, no concrete results. It became a plaque on the wall or engraved in the wall and a talking point for elected officials, nothing more. If the goal was to celebrate our extremely successful Filipino community, we can do that here with local events, business partnerships, school programs for a fraction of the cost and with direct benefits for Cerritos families. Having worked, prayed, and lived among members of the Filipino community and seeing their close ties with their cities back home, I could see that it could bring some benefit. But if the trip didn't, and the sister city designation doesn't bring back real tangible improvements for the people of Cerritos, then it was a misuse of time and resources, plain and simple. And as someone who has seen this exact story play out before, I can tell you, sister city relationships without accountability and/or follow-up, as councilmember Hong said earlier, are just empty promises dressed up as diplomacy. Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I do have a question for the speaker, and I believe I can ask because it is an agendized item, correct?
That's for your prerogative to ask.
Yes, you can ask.
Okay, Mr. Ayub, if you can please come to the microphone, I have a question. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that story. I didn't know that your aunt was the mayor over there. Do you know if they were involved with some type of organization that helped spearhead the program?
Like I said, I've been a resident of Cerritos all my life, not Huntington Park. So I could inquire about that. But I have attended a city council meeting and in Facebook groups. And even the residents who share that Mexican town admit that it did not bring benefits to them as residents of Huntington Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Say, do you have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Hong, do you have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Hong, do you have any additional questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Polito, any additional questions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any additional questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Annie, for the report on the history of the city's sister city program, a program that dates all the way back to 1964, which is almost 61 years ago. And I appreciate that you included in this report the attachment of the agenda report from August 29, 2000 with then-mayor Robert Hewlett, Mayor Protem Paul Bolin, Councilmember Bruce Barrows, Councilmember Grace Hugh, and Councilmember Gloria Cappy. Even back then, in 2000, that council supported a sister city program and set policy for it. And then in May 26 of 2022, the most current version of the City of Srito's sister city designation policy was signed by then-mayor Chung Bo. So having a sister city is clearly not new to this city and is not something we thought of overnight. At the direction of this council, staff will prepare a report for the Economic Development Commission related to the adoption of a sister city in the Philippines. The commission will set guidelines on the selection process and then will come to council for review. The sister city ad hoc committee, which comprises of myself as well as councilmember Mark Polito, is looking to ensure that this is a transparent and fair process and anticipates it will take months to finalize the establishment of a sister city relationship with the Philippines. The first meeting of the EDC is not set until September. And contrary to what is being said out there, there is almost zero to very minimal fiscal impact to the city. In the attachment to this staff report, it states that cities provide a minimal amount of staff support. It is not the intent of this council or the city to bring in a program that would impact our budget. We are not looking to fund this program. The success of these programs is through the work of the nonprofit organization who want to encourage cultural and educational exchange with other countries. So we will be looking for nonprofit organizations to partner with, and our support would then to be helping them establish that relationship. Tonight, we just celebrated the South Asian Heritage Month. And so why just stop having a city, just with the Philippines? I, as I said earlier, I wanted to expand our sister city program where we will consider the adoption of a city in India. The adoption of a city in India will also follow the process by going through the Economic Development Commission and then to council for approval. Again, this is at minimal cost to the city and one that will bring value such as cultural exchange, trade, and commerce. I've talked to a few organizations in the Filipino community, and they're very excited and willing to take on this project. They've been wanting to do it for years. In the staff report, they actually came to council back in 2000 requesting such a relationship. And I know there are organizations in the Indian community that would be just as proud to be able to spearhead such a program. But, you know, however, it saddens me when public speakers or I hear or read that some residents have, are, are opposed to having a sister city relationship with the Philippines. Some have asked, why have a sister city? Council should be focused on Srito's residents only. But as stated in Annie's report, in 1964, Councilmember Fred Truce remarked that an affiliation of this type could be beneficial to the community. So since 1964, Srito's has had subsequent adoptions of sister cities with former councils supporting the idea of such a relationship. I don't know, maybe folks don't like the Philippines, I don't know. Or that because there's three of us that are Filipino up here on this council. I don't know why there's so much negativity, and that's what saddens me. So I hope our residents will embrace future sister city relationships. As you have seen, that this was done by past councils and with community, and with the community back then. I'm pleased to see that this council sees the benefit in having one, and I hope they too would consider a future sister city to add to our list. So when it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file this report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, thank you. Thank you very much for your, your comments. My question is, again, thank you for this report, Annie Hilton. So according to this report, the city of Srito's, is it correct, the city of Srito's established a sister city relationship with the city in Brazil? Yes or no?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Thank you. And is it correct that the city of Srito's established a sister city relationship with the city in Taiwan?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And is it correct that the city of Srito's established a sister city relationship with the city in Mexico?
Yes, that is correct.
And all of these actions of establishing these three sister city relationships in Brazil, Taiwan, and Mexico, happened through city council actions? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you like to make your motion, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file this staff report.
Second. Let's vote.
The electronic voting is active.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break and come back at 10 o'clock.
People. Are we back on for the public? Okay. So. So we, Madam City Clerk, we concluded with the vote on the item 9B, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
So. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of item 9A.
I'll second that. Can we please vote?
We're bringing back 9A. Yes.
Can we vote on that, please? It was motioned. There was a motion to reconsider by Mayor Protem Linda Johnson. It was seconded by myself.
Well, can you make it more clear about this motion, please?
Uh, Mayor, City Attorney, can you explain what this motion is?
Yeah, the motion that was originally approved was to bring back a report related to additional information on self-storage facilities. And it was a vote of three to two. And so Mayor Protem is voting to reconsider that item and potentially amend it or consider other action based on that. So right now is just a motion to bring that item back to discuss it again.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. So we are on item 9A regarding self-storage facilities. I would like to propose a motion. I'd like to make a motion that addresses the concerns or more the inquiries of my colleagues where they have specified information that has intrigued them or they asked about during their questions or their comments. So I would like to make a motion. I make a motion to direct staff to bring back amended Cerritos Municipal Code Regulations pertaining to self-storage facilities that remove the cap, the quantity cap of four. And in that agenda report, in that agenda report that brings back to this council, to this city council, the amended Cerritos Municipal Code Regulations that remove that cap of four, that agenda report also include the details and information regarding the 2024 sale of the self-storage facility named Extra Space Storage at 17900 Crusader Avenue. And I also, my motion also is that that agenda report include information about the four businesses, the current four self-storage businesses, the details of those businesses such as their rates, their square footage, their number of units, and their percentage capacity, the percentage capacity of units being used or empty.
Sayon.
Oh, not done. Thank you, though. I appreciate that. Councilmember and former mayor Mark Polito. I also would like the agenda report to provide a summary, no, no, not a summary, to provide the details of the city council action that was taken in 2019 when these current municipal code regulations were passed by the council, including the details or a discussion of why the, why the council limited the number of self-storage businesses to four as can be determined from the discussion by the council and the questions from the council and the public comment and the agenda report. In fact, I would like the agenda report, the agenda reports, multiple reports, multiple agenda reports relating to the 2019 city council action enacting the current self-storage facility regulations. I would like those agenda reports attached to the agenda report that's going to be coming as an attachment. Okay? So. Again, I want the agenda report to explain in detail why the city council passed those 2019 regulations, including why it was limited to four, why the number four was chosen. And that's my motion.
Second.
Can I ask one question, Mayor? Just for clarification.
Yes, you can ask a question.
Thank you, sir. Which mean you're going to revisit on this amendment adding an existing regulation? Do have staff to study on that? Why? 2019 versus right now?
All of that information that I discussed coming back in the agenda report with the proposed amended Cerritos Municipal Code Regulations pertaining to self-storage facilities removing the cap of four.
Thank you, sir.
And if I could ask for clarification with this agenda item and your motion to bring back an amended ordinance removing the cap of four, because it's a zoning code or development code amendment, it would have to go to the Planning Commission first. Are you? Is your motion to bring that amended ordinance as well as all of the requested information as part of the agenda report to the Planning Commission? Or would the council like to review it first?
My, my thought on that is since the procedure you've just explained means it needs to go to the Planning Commission for their recommendation. Since it's a recommendation from the Planning Commission and it goes to the city council after that, I would like to go through the normal procedure you just explained. Do you second that? Still, do you still second the motion with what was explained by our city attorney?
Okay.
Council colleagues, do you have any questions about what the city attorney just explained to us?
No, thank you.
Okay. Let's please, let's please vote, council colleagues.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, council colleagues. Legislative items. City manager, do we have any legislative items?
No, sir, we don't have any items to report on either 10A or 10B.
Good answer. Report from the city manager. Does the city manager have a report?
None this evening, sir.
Good answer. City Council Communications, council member say.
Should I say nothing, so you say good answer too?
Councilmember say you can say whatever you choose to. You are, I, I'm glad to be, I'm glad to be at the stables with the four of you.
Thank you, sir. Takes me three minutes. It'll take me three minutes too. First, I want to thank you to everyone who reached out about my bruises on my face. And I felt two, I just want to let you know, I felt two weeks ago. And it was something that I should watch out and I didn't. I rushed out, do things and that give me a good listen. I learned to slow down a little bit. But however, everything, the tests come back was negative. And I also want to thank you, Mayor, that your support and understand and just tell me I have to be careful, Sophie. I really appreciate, sincerely appreciate. So for my quick report, there was four days attended. August 4th, I attended youth soccer award night and was so proud to present the trophy to my grandson, Lucas. He reminds me of this uncle, which is my second child, Dr. Ted, who was also known for his beat on the field. The summer youth soccer season brought together so many friends and the family such as ABCU City, Board Clerk, Mrs. Yokoyama Boye daughter, and the children of my longtime friends. It was wonderful to see the next generation playing with some showing their father's old soccer skills and other playing in completely different, the style of the father. As a devoted soccer mom myself, this brought back many great memories. I want to thank you to my fellow council members for supporting this youth soccer game program. August 7th, attending our 2025 National Night Out at Heritage Park. August 9th, I joined the marine biology boat trip hosted by the LA County Sanitation District. We discussed essential concerns regarding aging infrastructure, earthquake preparations, overflow risk. I invited two of my appointees and two members from our local senior club to join. August 12th, attending Bellflower Unified School District, welcome back to school day. Many elected officials were present and the newly hired superintendent brought gray energy and entries. It was honored to attend and I want to thank you, Mayor, for appointing me as representative of school district. That's it? Oh, I also attended two today. One is Komosa Senior Club and I was attending the, the event we have over our skyline. That will be my end report. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I'm, I'm glad that you went on the county sanitation district's boat trip. That, that looked interesting, except for me, it's on a boat, so. So I didn't sign up.
I had a hard time, though.
It's on a, it's on a slow-moving, small boat.
And I had a hard time, Mayor.
Okay, council member Hung.
Yes, okay, I made my report brief also. First of all, I want to talk about July 22nd to 25th that we went to Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders meeting at Atlanta, Georgia. It was a great, great event because we, not only our council member, four of our council member went together and we also have our appointees and commissioner all went, you know? And that was thanks to the mayor for giving them the chance and they feel very benefits from this trip. And they all learned a lot and do a great networking there as usual. All the conference, not only you learn a lot of new things and the most important thing is you do a lot of networking. You know other city if they have the same problem or maybe we can learn something from how they resolve their problem or that is great and you make friends with them. And in the future, we always stay in contact and that's very beneficial. And I think all the appointees and commissioner, whoever went with us, they really appreciate this trip. Okay, August 4th, I also attended 20, 2025 Youth Soccer League Awards Night. It was amazing. We really gave out a lot of awards and trophies and seeing all the kids are so happy and especially with all the coach, you know? And it was a great event. Everybody's enjoy it and have, you know, like a picnic style over there. And I say thank you for the parks recreation. They did a great job for, on that kind of event. And last night, August 13th, I attend the town hall meeting at the Cerritos Senior Center regarding the project we were talking about on South Street and Bloomfield. I feel their attendancy are very good. A lot of people show up. That means they really care about it. And also, a city did a great presentation from the planning department. And of course, they have a lot of tough questions, you know? But they handle very well and it's very good town hall meeting. And I think it's very good that we should have more of that kind of town hall meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hung. Council member Polito.
Mr. Mayor, I will pass until the next meeting to give my report. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Polito. Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 4th, I was at the youth soccer awards. August 7th, I was at National Night Out, very well attended by residents and employees. August 9th, Dion Warwick was at the CCPA, was a full house and with special guest Stevie Wonder. August 10th, I was back at the CCPA, saw Buddy Guy. It was a sold-out performance with special guest Kingfish. Again, yesterday, I was back at the CCPA. I'm there a lot. I buy my tickets. Leslie Odom Jr. at CCPA. And if you loved the Broadway show, Hamilton, that was a show not to miss. Many residents had concerns about the water rate increase. Therefore, I convened a meeting that was held on August 8th. This is a meeting that I hosted. I started off with inviting my appointees and then extended invitations to former commissioners and committee members and also other city leaders. City staff was also in attendance. It was well within my purview to meet with members of the community to discuss city matters. And it is common for city staff to be on hand to provide information and help answer questions. So it is well within the scope of my duties to host such a meeting. And I would have wanted more folks to come, but however, we simply did not have a room large enough. That meeting was well received. I want to thank the city manager, Robert Lopez, Director Alvin Papa, Chris and Director Drew Schneider and Ryan Carey as well for attending that meeting. There were many questions and residents were very engaged. We find that smaller meetings allows for residents to ask the questions that they'd like to ask. And so with that, the city sees the benefit of having these small community meetings. Therefore, they will take the lead moving forward and roll out more meetings with the same format. When they publicize the dates of these meetings, I would really encourage residents to attend so that they can get firsthand information about the state of our water rates. There are some graphs and tables that have been posted on social media. These are inaccurate, so please do not, do not rely on that information. Ask our city staff, especially those in our Public Works Department as they're the professionals that have the educational background and have been trained in this area. I want to make sure that all of our residents receive accurate information. Speaking of social media, I appreciate the enthusiasm and time spent by some of our residents that have posted information, graphs, their analysis of water rates, CCPA, et cetera. I know that it is their First Amendment right and I welcome it. However, when I see mean-spirited comments, bullying, and even comic strips portraying staff, that's where it becomes very disappointing for me. Not as a council member, but as a resident that lives in this city. Council members are fair game. You elected us and that is part of. Council members are fair game. You elected us and that is part of the job we signed up for. But if you have comments or criticism about our employees, then why not just call them? They're more than happy to take your call. Our employees, our employees serve the community and they will be glad to help you. I even had a resident that called me and she said when she called city hall and had a question about our water rates, Drew answered the phone and she was shocked. She actually thought it would have to go through, you know, many levels till she met, got to talk to the director. So that's what I'm saying. Please call city hall. While I cannot stop folks from posting what they're posting, I just want them to be respectful. Why? Because that's just the Cerritos way. Other cities read your comments and your posts and they're shocked and saddened about these posts and comments on how they come off. So put yourselves in the shoes of our staff, although you're not, you may not be a public employee. You may have a friend, a family member or a child that goes into public service. They are those that help solve the everyday issues of our residents. It is a duty and a privilege to serve your fellow citizens. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
May I have a question?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. And council member Hong, you have a question?
Yes, I, I do agree that those kind of small meeting is good, but the only thing as I asked manager is because of a Brown Act, because my committee and commissioner, they want to listen to and they say, well, because of Brown Act, they couldn't go, right? So how are you going to organize this? You have to be different councilmen or a different commissioner or?
So for these types of meetings that would, in which staff is providing information, you're correct, we can't have meetings of more of a majority of any board or commission, city council. So we would have to limit, for example, the council members present to, same thing for the commissioners, for the committees, it would be a maximum of four. So, but we, we have ways of working with those members to advise them. What we're planning to do moving forward is to host a series of meetings. We're going to start off with three meetings that people can sign up for. So with that, we'd be able to avoid potential Brown Act issues.
So that means everybody can attend. It doesn't matter or it's open to public? It's kind of like town hall meeting? Not invited group?
Correct. Our, our plan moving forward for city staff is to publicly announce meetings that people, that any member of the public can attend. Because of space limitations that we would ask that people RSVP so that we can make sure there's a adequate space for more of a conversational setting as opposed to a large audience format. That's what we're currently planning to do.
Okay, that was, thank you. Well, that was just, thank you for the staff. It's just going to make your work more. Thank you though.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to first say that I I'm really, I'm really thankful and happy that we had a wonderful set of presentations at this meeting, really, that really showed the great community members in our city of Cerritos, doing things in our city. Some, some really fantastic things that those groups are doing and Smita Fasanta is doing for our community. Good, good people in those groups, good people doing things for our community and for the residents of Cerritos. And we also got to celebrate just such a unique birthday of Annie De La Cruz celebrating her 100th birthday in about an hour and a half. So I was really, you know, I'm really thankful. Thank you, Kathy, for helping me and the council with Christina and Tricia and Scott putting together those presentations today. They were, they were awesome. Okay? Please, please tell them thank you from the council. Okay, because there was a lot of happy and proud people in this audience today. Thank you to all my colleagues. You know, I'm hearing such great, you know, great service to the community that you're doing representing the city of Cerritos, representing the residents with your participating, participation and attendance at events. I saw, I saw you, my colleagues at the League of California City Women's Caucus event earlier this evening in our city, our Cerritos Library Skyline Room. I'll say it, I, I've said something like this before. The League of California Cities are cities up and down. The state of California, Northern California, Central California, Southern California. The Los Angeles County, the, the Women's Caucus decided to have a women's empowerment event celebrating Orange County and LA County elected leaders and business, a business leader from Amazon. And out of all the cities to pick, they picked our city of Cerritos to have the event in our skyline room. And they paid for it, right, Robert?
Yes, that's correct.
And they paid for it. So they had this event celebrating Orange County Supervisor Katrina Foley, a leader from Amazon. And they recognized our assembly member Sharon Kirk Silva and our supervisor, Janice Hahn here in Cerritos. And our, we attended and but we, then we had to get to work and we came down to our city council meeting. But, but again, those are the kind of things that make me proud for our city. Proud for our city, that our city is recognized by our colleagues in other cities. The leaders of the Women's Caucus, the leaders of League of California Cities to have that event in our skyline room. And I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem, Linda Johnson, for representing our city at the, with, with, with my council colleagues at the youth soccer awards. Thank you for representing our city council at the youth soccer awards last week. And thank you for representing our city council at the National Night Out. Linda, with our council colleagues, thank you guys for attending that. And we, I'm so proud of this council that we worked together thoughtfully, deliberatively. It was challenging, but we worked together through compromise to come to a unanimous budget. Okay, but the work's not over. And the fact is that we had to make a tough decision because we're budget constrained to direct staff to close the library for one day a week. But I feel that we need to do a detailed, top to bottom analysis of the library. Because the library, our awesome, world renowned Cerritos Library, where we just had a League of California Cities event, Women's Caucus event in our skyline room, but that, that library has a in our fiscal, in our current fiscal, in our current budget, it's budgeted at about $7 million. Okay, so we need, this city council needs to consider any and all options to address any unnecessary expenses or any luxurious expenses, any anything we can do to address that $7 million budget, budgeted bottom line number for the library, that $7 million number. I need the city manager's office and you experts in city hall and you experts in the library to bring back a comprehensive, top to bottom any and all ideas memo on how we could reduce the estimated $7 million, the $7 million budgeted amount for the library. Okay? Because I kind of, I, I, I kind of, I feel like I should have asked for that before, I should have asked for that in addition to just saying what happens if we close the library for one day a week and we're saving $200,000? Okay, we need to look at the library, top to bottom, inside and outside, programs and services. How can we reduce that, but that budget number of $7 million? Okay? And I want to make it clear, I am not talking about staffing. Because we're getting a staffing study back. Right, Robert? We're getting a staffing study. Right?
That is currently underway, yes.
So this memo I'm asking for is not related to staffing. Okay, I asked for consensus from my colleagues for, for that memo.
I concur.
I concur.
Concur.
So please bring back that memo to us, Robert. Last, I was really, really excited about something, so I'm going to share this. Okay? So on Sunday, August 10th, I was a happy dad and I, my son went with me to the Star Trek Las Vegas Trek, Star Trek Las Vegas 2025 Trek the Vegas Convention at the Rio Hotel in Las Vegas. And I was honored to go on the stage of the theater at the Rio Hotel in Las Vegas. And as the mayor of Cerritos present a proclamation to Don Actor, Don Lewis, who for five seasons of Star Trek Lower Decks portrayed Captain Carol Freeman of the USS Cerritos. And what was, so hundreds of people were in the theater. And when I stepped up to the microphone for my turn and I said, among other things, I said, my name is Frank Yokoyama and I am the mayor of the city of Cerritos. The room, you could hear audible gasps. And there was clapping and there was applauding. And afterwards, some of the people that I talked to came up to me and they said, one of them said, Don Lewis was, you could see she was emotional. It looked like she was tearing up. It looked like she was crying. When I said those words and I started reading the proclamation, the whereas's, she said, Mayor, come up here. And she called me up to the stage and that's how I got to personally hug her, shake her hand, present the proclamation to her, take a photos with her on the stage, shake her hand and give her the challenge coin of the city of Cerritos, Cerritos in Progress, and gave her a gift bag of city of Cerritos swag and logoed items. Thank you, Kathy Matsumoto and Tricia and Christina for putting that together to me. So I will always be proud and honored that Star Trek Lower Decks is lifting up the name of the city of Cerritos around the world. So that's what I wanted to share. Thank you, my council colleagues, for letting me share that with you guys. Live long and prosper, like Mark, like Mark Palito says. But specific to the Star Trek Lower Decks TV show that was for five seasons long, that just wrapped up their fifth and final season just at the end of last year, the thing that their characters yell regularly throughout the season, throughout the shows, in moments of action, they yell out, "Cerritos strong." On that show, that's a common exclamation among the characters, "Cerritos strong." Next on the agenda is item 12, city attorney. Will you please announce the closed session item?
Yes, the closed session items we will be discussing are listed under 12A, B and C. Conference with Labor Negotiators with respect to AFSMI Local 619 and the Full Time Exempt, as well as one matter of potential litigation.
Okay, thank you to staff for joining us at this meeting. We will now adjourn the regular meeting and the council will recess to closed session.